The Boulder Valley Board of Education to order? Or do we do roll on work sessions?
I typically do a visual roll call.
Okay, that's what I thought. I didn't remember doing like a... Okay.
Yes, correct.
So we'll get started. I'll turn it over to Rob Anderson.
Thank you, Kathy. Welcome, board members. So we have two work session items today. Our first is going to be led by Rob Price to give the board and the public an update on indoor air quality here in BVSD. So, Rob, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, President Marquess, members of the board this evening. Oh, geez, President Gavhardt. I so apologize. Saying it for too many years. Wow. Should I just start over? This evening, we were providing an update on our indoor air quality initiative. This started as a board directive back in the spring of 2016. Since that time, district staff, University of Tulsa and the University of Colorado, researchers have been doing a comprehensive assessment of our air quality in all of our schools and have worked to promote improvements through several different avenues. We'll talk about that more tonight. During the same time period, we established the District-wide Indoor Air Quality Committee to help disseminate air quality information and provide a high level of accountability. This work has been extremely important. If you remember, the last update we provided was February of 2020, right before the pandemic hit. One of the important mitigation strategies to deal with COVID has been through ventilation. So we set ourselves up for success not knowing we were even doing that. So, thank you. Tonight, I am joined by Dr. Gita Carroll, our Sustainability Coordinator, Molly McLaughlin, our Director of Facilities, Dr. Richard Shaughnessy, University of Tulsa, and Professor Mark Hernandez, Professor at University of Colorado, who have been really, these four have been leading our indoor air quality initiative. Professor Hernandez and Dr. Shaughnessy are both joining us online tonight. So, University of Tulsa, University of Colorado, performed a pre-bond assessment that was broken into three phases, and Gita and Molly will talk about this a little bit further. They did a pre-bond assessment, and then now they're doing a post-bond assessment. We're two-thirds of the way through that post-bond assessment. We're working several ways to monitor and protect the indoor air quality. So, we are tracking and evaluating this work. That's what we've hired University of Tulsa and Colorado, University of Colorado, to do. And then we put that, put together that indoor air quality team, which assists really our school administrators by reviewing indoor air quality-related information and recommending procedures and how we maintain and improve the air quality throughout our building. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Carroll.
Great. Thank you. So, the 2014 bond work preparation and implementation has given the district an opportunity to touch all of our schools and make improvements in many areas, including indoor air quality. Additionally, our district commitment to sustainability, which is supported by board policy and outlined in our Green BVSD Action Plan and Sustainable Energy Plan, have been incorporated into green building principles and identified as priorities in the bond. So, this was shared and tracked with all bond projects throughout and covers many areas, including energy efficiency, waste management, material selection, and indoor air quality. The priorities were also embedded into our BVSD technical specifications. In order to track sustainability improvements in the bond, staff has been using a truncated LEED checklist, which is Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. We asked all of our projects to maximize points in the area of indoor environmental quality, which includes improving thermal comfort, using products with low volatile organic compounds, which include paints and sealants, and increasing natural daylight when possible. One of the main ways we've been able to improve IAQ through the bond is by making improvements to our heating, ventilation, and cooling systems, and by commissioning all the projects, which ensures that the systems are operating as they should, maximizing both comfort and efficiency. As part of the bond, we also work with all school staff before construction to recycle and purge when possible, thus reducing clutter, which makes spaces difficult to clean and impacts indoor environmental quality. And along these lines, the new schools were given guidelines on best practices for maintaining indoor air quality, including restrictions around some personal furniture, plants, and pets, which help minimize allergens, dust, and mold. Next slide, please. The District Indoor Air Quality Team was established in 2016 as an advisory committee to the Board of Education and the superintendent. The purpose of the District Indoor Air Quality Team when it was initially established was to disseminate air quality information, register air quality complaints and direct responses, and communicate air quality issues and the status at district schools to district administration staff, students, and parents. The team has been composed of about nineteen voluntary representative members of the BVSD community, and reflects the diversity of our community, includes staff, school leadership, teachers, community health professionals, professionals, and the district IQ consultant, Dr. Shaughnessy, who's joining us tonight. Membership has shifted over time. I am currently one of the co-chairs of the committee, along with Ron Flack from Boulder County. Dr. Shaughnessy acts as a direct liaison to the committee, and he facilitates reporting, coordination, and education activities. He also reports to the committee. We have met regularly since 2016. Our last meeting was on August 2021, and will now meeting as an advisory basis as needed. New members were added over time as the committee terms expired or as roles changed, and shifts were made to the committee in December 2020 to have a better community-to-staff ratio. Additionally, Carrie Jensen, the new Assistant Director of Facilities for the district, was hired, and she fills a permanent role and acts as contact for environmental and custodial staff. Information about the committee work can be found on the website, which we can provide, and this includes members and agendas and minutes from all of our previous meetings. Next slide, please. So, some of the accomplishments of the committee since it was established were establishing IAQ liaisons at most of our schools, which were principal-appointed. Each of these liaisons received a copy of an indoor quality audit of their school with recommendations and next steps specifically for that school. These liaisons also reported issues as they arose. The committee helped to develop, recommend guidelines for newly renovated spaces to maintain good air quality, which I referred to earlier as part of the bond work. And the committee also was crucial in developing a response and process for when IAQ issues arose within the district. During the 2019-20 year, the committee worked to create policy and standard operating procedures around both indoor air quality and integrated test management best practices. The language was finalized and incorporated into updated ECB policy approved by the board in June 2021. In addition, the team created standard operating procedures and recommendations that were incorporated into practice this last school year. The procedures include recommendation for green cleaning and non-toxic products. The committee also spent a good deal of time coming up with greening school supply lists that were set to go out to schools in spring 2020, but were, of course, put on hold due to COVID at that point. During the 2021 school year, meetings, all of our meetings focused on updates around district reopening and plans to address indoor air quality in light of COVID. The team was very supportive of the work and all of the plans that the district had in place to respond to the pandemic. And on my last slide shows that the district has continued to be recognized nationally and locally for investment and commitment to this work. So, again, we just want to thank the board for continuing to prioritize the work. We've been invited to speak at national and local conferences on the topic of indoor air quality in light of our bond projects and in light of the pandemic. We're part of the Efficient and Healthy Schools Campaign through the Lawrence Berkeley National Lab, which is for schools who are prioritizing both energy efficiency and indoor air quality. There was an article that featured the work of the district, and specifically Metelark, and the features around indoor air quality that was in the Spring 2021 Learning by Design magazine. And our recommendation as a leader dates back even to 2014, when we were one of the first school districts in the nation to be awarded the green ribbon award from the U.S. Department of Education. With that, I will turn it over to Molly.
Good evening. I just want to remind everybody that this indoor air quality study has been a multi-year study. We spent three years doing post, or pre-renovation audits, so that we can really establish a baseline of where our schools are starting prior to construction. We are, we've completed Phase One, Phase Two, and now we're starting Phase Three of the after-construction audits. So, today, we'll have a summary of results. Again, we provided the last update to the board in February 2020, pre-pandemic, and now Dr. Richard Shaughnessy with the University of Tulsa and Professor Mark Hernandez with the University of Colorado will give us an update on the results, summarizing both Phase One and Phase Two to date.
Thank you, Molly. The, okay. Briefly, I'm going to go through some of the study objectives. And to blanket this, this has been an expansive effort. Mark and myself have been doing this kind of work for well over twenty. I've been in it for over thirty years, and there's never been an effort of this magnitude that was actually established pre-COVID. This is not called on as a function of COVID, but it was looked at proactively to address improving air quality in schools. So with that, we'll talk briefly about it. There, we're using that Advanced Tools for Schools checklist, Tools for Schools has been developed by the EPA out of Washington, D.C., and we've worked with them to develop that. We looked at baseline information to collect it and interpret it. We've done a lot of outreach and education, and we plan to continue that with the results of the study. And the efforts have gone to facilities, administrative staff, and teachers. Now, long-term, what we're trying to get to is to look to the benefits afforded by the bond renovation program to improve student health and performance. Okay. To kind of get into that, the measurements recorded in BVSD, we've looked so far in Phase One and Phase Two, we looked at thirty-two of the schools, pre and post-bond renovation. We've looked at monitoring of carbon dioxide, temperature, humidity during occupied hours. We compared the numbers we're generating to standards for ventilation and thermal comfort, and we're looking at cleaning effectiveness, using a biomarker, if you will, to determine contamination on desktops. Done a minimum of thirty samples for school, pre and post cleaning, examining changes between pre and post with the cleaning, and walk-through observations and spot checks that we've done. Again, we use the standardized checklist by the EPA, but we have detailed that ourselves and added to that. We've also taken staff and survey assessments to get feedback from the staff on their perception of air quality within the schools. So, what have we looked at? We've looked at cleaning effectiveness, pressure relations. We've looked at thermal comfort. We've looked at ventilation, and carbon dioxide is something that is a surrogate for ventilation, and that's why we take carbon dioxide measurements, moisture intrusion, animals and plants, clutter, et cetera. So, with that said, we have looked at, in the Phase One and Phase Two schools, that's thirty-two schools, we looked at two-hundred-and-eleven classrooms in pre-renovation. These are not randomly selected, but they're based on location without, within the school, and with respect to different zones to be representative. And post-renovation efforts, we've looked upward of three-hundred classrooms post-renovation. And again, we're doing measurements, and we're doing walkthrough assessments where we have surveys that we are conducting within the classroom. Some of them brief, and some of them more detailed than what we call focus classrooms. Just briefly, and this is in our final report on Phase One and Phase Two, it's a kind of a rating of acceptability, kind of what might be acceptable, needing improvement, and for with respect to temperature, humidity, carbon dioxide, again, being a surrogate for ventilation, and ATP, which is residual biocontamination on surfaces. Next slide. So with that, what did we come up with? Temperature, ASHRAE is the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers, and they look at, you know, what are acceptable temperatures. We found through our studies that as temperature is kind of tweaked and lowered to an acceptable range, that students are able to perform better academically, and test scores improve along with that. We found ninety, well, we found twelve-point-five percent increase in rooms between pre and post renovation in acceptable temperature, and close to ninety-five percent of the sample of classrooms were in the acceptable range. Carbon dioxide, this is very important in terms of ventilation. Now with COVID, there's a huge emphasis on ventilation. You know, I could go on and talk about that, but I can tell you that it is a fundamental provision that we're looking at. It's not, we have to take a holistic approach when we're dealing with COVID, but carbon dioxide is one of those things that tells us how much ventilation. And between pre and post, we saw somewhere on the order of a forty-four percent improvement in carbon dioxide, which correlates to much better ventilation, higher ventilation rates, and that's what we're striving for.
And we currently have, we've ordered CO2 sensors for our classrooms and received those in October. So, thank you again, board, for supporting this effort, and thirty-one percent of those are installed to date. So, that's an ongoing installation that will continue as we have breaks in instruction to get those installed through just June thirty of this year. So, our goal is to have it in, in all the classroom spaces. But thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Yeah, that's very important, and we're kind of taking parallel measurements to that. So, we're, it's more like quality assurance to ensure we're getting good output, good data, good readings and such. ATP is an indication, again, of biocontamination on surfaces. When we touch the surfaces, when we take our thumb to a desktop, or kids drool on a surface, or what may happen, yeah, we're laying down a DNA fingerprint. That DNA fingerprint can be picked up by other children as they come to that desk, and hands then to other hands, and more and more contact. So, we're looking through cleaning efforts to get a reduction in ATP levels, and we did see a clear reduction in pre-contamination, post-contamination compared to pre-renovation levels, which, which was excellent. I mean, we had a good outcome. That's what we're striving for. We've done a lot on cleaning, and we found we're also taking other data related to health, which tells us that there is a health improvement as well associated with that cleaning, and we're actually submitted that for journal publication at the present. Next slide. Mark, I want to hand it to you.
Okay, thanks. How's my audio? Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm gonna just interject a new word here, bio aerosol, and it's just like the word suggests. What in microbiology is present in an aerosol? And this is all micro stuff. It's stuff you can't see. Obviously, COVID's brought a new awareness to this term, and the little graph up there shows you size ranges on the order of micrometers, right? These are things we need, you can only see under the microscope, of, of the big four that we live in, eat and breathe in the indoor environment every day, virus bacteria, palms, and fungal spores. There's a lot of negative connotations with these, but the truth of the matter is, these things are all around us. They're normal in indoor and outdoor environments. Rarely do they harm us, but some of them do, COVID being the example. So, what we did was, in parallel with the Phase Two work, we went in and actually measured these bioaerosols in the classrooms, pre and post renovation, across multiple seasons, so during different semesters. Next slides, please. Here's some pictures on the right of the instruments in the classrooms. They're quiet. They're non-intrusives. You can see the kids aren't really paying attention to them. We just wheel them in, walk out, come back when the kids are in lunch, and move them to another classroom. We looked at twenty-five schools, three classrooms each, and that first bar of four boxes there under the three-classroom icon essentially describes the science that's encased in each of these instruments. And without going too deeply, I'm gonna summarize that for you in this next slide, if you could, please. So, we used two independent methods, so we would have confidence in these observations. One was a chemical method. We literally took an air sample and would extract the cell wall of airborne microbes and weigh that. That's on the left. It's called micometry. This is an example of airborne fungi, and you can see there's three different colored bars up there, and the bars or the boxes are split into percentiles. Twenty-five is the bottom of the box. The line in the middle is the median. The in-between observation, the times the top is the seventy-fifth percentile, and you see brown, or black, red, and blue. The range of observations for the brown boxes are pre-renovation. Those after renovation are in the red, and those immediately outdoors, as is always the case, they're in the blue, are lower. But you can see, using both of these methods, we have a significant reduction in bioaerosols, and this in particular case is normal every day, fungi, a mold floating around. No, nothing to be alarmed about here, but the win-win here is the renovation, all the things that Rich just described to you, ventilation, enhanced cleaning, changing materials, had effect on the airborne bioaerosols as judged by this. And this has been blindly peer-reviewed, and it just highlights the win-win and the, a hard measurement effect of all the things that came together with this renovation. So, that's the take-home story of this slide with two independent measures. So, I'm gonna then turn it back over to the survey responses to you now.
These are the surveys that we distributed to staff. And you see, over nineteen-hundred surveys were taken in Phase One and Phase Two. More being taken, will be taken with Phase Three, but thirty-eight percent of all the staff responded to pre-renovation, twenty-five percent of the staff responded to post-renovation, and this is a good measure in terms of perception. You know, we're making improvements, but how does that translate with respect to satisfaction? To conclude, cleaning effectiveness definitely improved. Ventilation, it has improved significantly, and it should continue to be monitored, and it is, as Molly made reference to. Ventilation, again, is one of the approaches that we take. We have to take a holistic approach of cleaning, ventilation, mask, distancing, everything we could do, air cleaners, which have also been put into this, the district, which is outstanding. And so, all of those translate into better indoor air. Thermal comfort issues still noted among teachers and staff, but that's very common. And then we have exchange of information with the District IAQ Committee, which Gita talked about earlier, and it's been a very positive exchange, and hopefully, the information developed by the committee will sustain for the future, be able to make a difference and can be ingrained in what's going on. We're also continuing collection of data on Phase Three, and we're looking to, we've taken extensive absenteeism symptom health data over the past three to four years, and we're, one last thing is attention to reduction of clutter. And the, the upshot of this is that I've never seen a study of this nature. We've never had the opportunity to engage in this level. I've worked in schools in Scandinavia, in Southern Europe, all throughout the U.S., and it's an outstanding effort. And to be able to capture data pre and post and bring it back into what are the benefits realized, that's what the overall goal of the study is. Molly, with respect to COVID, why don't you make, pick up this slide?
Thank you, Richard. So, the work we've done in collaboration with the University of Tulsa and the University of Colorado on indoor air quality really did position us well to respond to a pandemic. It was not something that we expected, but it really is part of our layered response. So, during the 2021 school year, the Indoor Air Quality Committee meetings focused on updates surrounding school district reopening and plans to address indoor air quality. The IAQ Committee has been very supportive of this work and the plans we had in place. The valued relationships with our partners, both University of Tulsa and University of Colorado, have helped us validate that our operational practices and procedures, cleaning, HVAC, and all kinds of guidance, were in line with emergent practices to mitigate COVID. You know, both Mark and Richard have donated hours of time and expertise to the district in our IAQ efforts, and we want to thank them for that. A few of the processes that operations carried out over COVID mitigation from the study include the carbon dioxide monitoring and minor HVAC adjustments to ensure that we had adequate ventilation. This is ongoing. We don't just make one adjustment and stop. We continue to modify as needed. Throughout the past year, with coronavirus pandemic disrupting school as usual, BVSD has pivoted to ensure that students, faculty are safe at school. BVSD created guidelines and protocols to support teachers in facilitating outdoor learning experiences. Such experiences may continue to be an integral part of our education in the future, even when social distancing is no longer necessary. So, moving forward, preliminary indications with all of this work indicate that we've had an overall positive impact on indoor air quality in the district. Over the past five years, we've changed many of our operational practices and procedures to respond to indoor air quality concerns. BVSD staff now has procedures and tools to make adjusted, necessary adjustments as needed. So, some of the statistics that I have to share are, initial response to indoor air quality work orders occurs within twenty-four hours. We have a resolution time of indoor air quality issues in about three-point-four days. Two-hundred-and-sixty-six work orders on indoor air quality have been addressed in the past three years alone, and we've only engaged with a third-party consultant on seventeen cases. So, we really have a new awareness, not only with our staff, but also throughout the district on indoor air quality. So, again, we'll continue to work with Dr. Richard Shaughnessy and Professor Mark Hernandez to complete the indoor air quality audits for Phase Three and make any adjustments as needed. We've also have a commitment to continuous improvement and educational awareness for all of our staff and faculty. We've also have a commitment to continuous improvement and educational awareness for all of our staff and faculty. And we'll continue to collect the data and we'll, our intention is to have a final report back to you on the entire study sometime in 2023. Thank you for this opportunity.
Open it up for questions.
Kitty?
Yeah, first I want to thank everybody for doing all this work and thanks the professors for volunteering their time. This is really wonderful news to be getting and it, it makes me proud to be part of this district that we're on the forefront of improving the indoor environment. My question is about ventilation of the schools in the fire zone. Because the outdoor air isn't necessarily of good quality. I mean, my vet said not to take my dog out for a walk.
So we're following guidance from Boulder County Public Health on this. So when the fires occurred, I think around 12 o'clock in the afternoon, 12:30, Molly had the foresight to shut down all of our dampers at all of our schools to make sure that we weren't getting smoke or combustible byproducts in our buildings. So all those dampers were closed. For the few days afterwards, we kept our dampers closed until Boulder County Public Health gave us direction to open them back up because their quality outdoors was safe. So we are still following their direction. Happy to note that here in the near future, I don't have an exact date yet, we will have air quality monitors on all of our schools in Superior and Louisville to monitor the outdoor air quality. So that is a commitment that Boulder County Public Health has made. And then we will set up a website where parents and our teachers or staff, et cetera, can get on there and monitor that. So right now dampers are open, but we got to think about, we don't have dry conditions. We don't have ash and soot blowing through the air just because we have snowpack, we have wet conditions. But we'll continue to monitor that.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Richard?
Thank you for the report. Pretty comprehensive.
Thank you.
I remember six years ago, can you hear me? I remember six years ago when I first got on the Board of Education here, one of the biggest issues that we had in air quality was Casey Middle School. And I'm assuming everything is well at Casey because I haven't heard anything about Casey at this point in time. And was there, was Casey involved in as part of that thirty-two schools or the number of schools that were?
Yes, all, all fifty-seven schools have been involved throughout this assessment. So they've been, they've had a pre-bond assessment. Do you know where they're at with post-bond assessment, Molly?
Casey is, I believe, completed with their post-bond assessment. And we've made adjustments to indoor quality there. And like anything, that was a point in time. And so as we get concerns, we respond to teachers and staff immediately within 24 hours and make minor adjustments. So everything is, it has been resolved at Casey.
Everything's cool at Casey, cool.
It is.
Beth?
Um, yeah, I also want to echo what everyone else has said. Thank you so much for that report. That was really interesting and I'm, I'm very proud of the, the work you guys have done. I'm thinking back onto the beginning of the school year and conversations I had with parents. And some of the concerns around summertime fires and air quality and sort of that decision that maybe building leaders make, I'm not sure who makes that decision, regarding students doing instruction outside versus inside. And some of those concerns, kind of that balance with COVID and the concerns of indoor air quality versus smoke in the outdoor air quality. So I guess one of my questions would be, what, what data points are we using to kind of make that call on a building level?
So for indoor air quality, as Richard presented, we really want to keep our levels below twelve hundred. That's an ash rate guideline. And that's an indicator of really great ventilation. From twelve hundred to two thousand indicates that there needs to be improvement. It's not bad, just needs to be improvement. And then over two thousand, it's considered poor. So when we're looking at indoor air quality, those are the parameters we measure with the CO2 sensors that we're installing. And right now, we, like I said, we have thirty-one percent of the district installed. And by next summer, we plan to have the entire district done. And then for outdoor air quality, we're relying on our Boulder County Public Health partners.
We do, just to note it, Health Services really provides the guidance around outdoor air quality to our schools. They have a website on outdoor air quality that has the metrics defined when it's unhealthy, et cetera. So we do watch that. And prior to the fires, we would issue guidance, you know, if it was a day where we're going to have a high winds, we knew dust was going to be prevalent, we would issue guidance, you know, those kids that might have asthma or something, you keep them indoors, however, athletics can continue. But we'll continue to monitor that, so that's why we're working with public health. We know we're going to have issues this spring where everyone has to stay indoors, et cetera.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm on our outdoor air quality site and it does use the Colorado Department of Public Health. And Air Now, it shows the air quality index and, and shows what the air quality levels are based at a specific school and site. So that information has also been shared with schools and, and shared on bad air quality days.
I, I can add too, I'm working with CDPHE. And they're going to add, update their guidance next month. And everything's progressing towards real-time, nationally networked and updated, both in terms of concerns with COVID, outdoor and indoor allergens and wildfire air quality concerns. So watch for that, that, that should be anytime soon. And all this is just going to get better and faster.
You know, and one, one other comment. I, I just finished a monumental effort, Mark knows of it, chairing a conference, an international conference on indoor air. And we had over approximately four hundred people, virtual. And one of the most well-attended sessions at the conference was that on schools. There's so much attention on schools right now. And I was chairing that session as well. And it was very well attended, but the thing that struck me, no one had any, anything close to what you're doing there in Boulder. I mean, there are kind of isolated anecdotal efforts going on. But I think Mark, he could attest to that as well. This is a rare kind of program that you put in place well before COVID. And it speaks so well of the district and where you're headed in the future. So I'm proud to be a part of the effort, I really am.
Cool. Great to be on the forefront of this effort for sure. Last year, the District Accountability Committee kind of got on a tangent about perfumes, air fresheners, diffusers, those kinds of chemical compounds that are used in classrooms. And I was wondering if you guys did any work on that or if you have recommendations for at the school-based level? That was just a big area of concern, but I didn't hear it mentioned specifically in this report. The advisory team did spend quite a bit of time on that and came up with comprehensive lists around recommendations and best practice. And that information was then incorporated into our standing operating procedures. So I can, we can share the information that the committee came up with and what was incredible.
It was not a mandate that we did this. And I mean, we dealt with the Axe body sprays and everything else. So we've issued some guidelines to schools, but really what we've tried to take, the air fresheners that, you know, staff might have plugged in in classrooms, et cetera. We've issued that guidance, we've asked to take that out. But it's the deodorants, et cetera, that I think continue to be a challenge in our buildings.
So I'm confused, Rob. I thought the slide said we did thirty-two schools and you just said we did all the schools. So I, can you explain that?
Yeah, clarify, we've, pre-bond assessment, all of the schools have been, have, we've went through. Post-bond assessment, we've completed thirty-two of the fifty-seven. The remaining will be done this year. So in twenty-three, is that correct, Molly? We will have a final report that we'll be able to distribute.
Is, is there an interim report or anything we'll have besides just the slides?
We do have an interim report. Yep, and we can get that to you.
The CO2 detectors, do they pick up any, will they help with picking up the indoor air quality if the, if the conditions from the fire are worsening or?
They will only tell us if we're not bringing in enough fresh air. So, and that's what we were finding. To be honest, we had in the schools, at the beginning of this week, we were not pulling in fresh air because we did not have clear guidance. So we were trying to balance what's more important, what's more harmful to the students. Is it the air quality outdoors or is it the pandemic within our buildings? So we've met with Boulder County Public Health on several different occasions and we finally reached consensus that we can open up our dampers, bring in that outdoor air. That's why it's so important that we get our outdoor air monitors on our buildings so that we can understand in real-time what the data is telling us. Because right now, if you go to airnow.gov, that's Boulder County in general. It's not specific to the fire areas. And the purple air now monitors could have ash and soot or they could be under someone else's bed, they're privately owned. So we don't know if the data is good. So we don't have specific data, but what we do know right now is we've got a lot of snowpack that's holding everything down. We don't have ash and soot and we don't have high windy days right now.
So with the transmissibility of Omicron, is there anything we need to be doing to improve our ventilation that we're not doing currently? Or is, I'm just curious because it's so transmissible, I didn't know if there is.
I really don't believe we can. We are doing with the air purifiers, that was really guided by Dr. Shaughnessy and Mark, to the increased ventilation, the wildfires threw a curveball at us at those eight schools, but we didn't change ventilation at the other schools within the district. But I feel like we are doing everything we possibly can right now from a ventilation perspective.
And what I would add to that is ventilation alone is not going to stop the spread of Omicron. It's really our entire layered approach with masks, with cleaning, then ventilation and, and making sure that we have all those layers in place to help minimize the risk.
No, I, I support the layered approach. I just didn't know if there was anything we needed to be doing differently with the layer of ventilation. So I know that we, I remember this when my kids would be sick, you have to go through fifty questions about whether it was respiratory or not. Do we have the results to show whether we're having an impact on the health? Will that be in the interim report? I'm just curious.
That is not in the interim report, but will be in the final report.
Do we have any anecdotal evidence about whether this is improving the health of our students?
Richard, do you have any, do you have a comment to that?
I, I couldn't really say anecdotally. I mean, we have, in preliminary studies, we saw better absenteeism with pre and post conditions. And then bam, there comes COVID, right, right in the thick of it. So that very much threw us the curve ball, curve ball. So the pre and post, when you're comparing, you know, with COVID now and pre before, we're getting a better look at that right now with, we will, with phase three schools, where conditions very much are similar to what we had prior to. The, the other thing about ventilation, you know, yes, you know, is there anything to be done? Not really. It's like Molly said, you cannot ventilate your way out of this, but you can optimize your ventilation. And that is what the district is doing. And she mentioned twelve hundred parts per million. In fact, Molly, as you and I and Rob know, we're, we're shooting well, well below that actually, which, which translates into higher ventilation rate. So we're doing even better than that. So we are taking an added measure. We're not just meeting old standards, but we're trying to maximize what we have with the systems in place.
And this is just a question for Rob. It seems like there might be some fun opportunities here for some experiential learning with our students as we're doing this air monitoring outside their classrooms and outside the schools. It might just be something to think about as we go forward. I can remember working with CDPHE and others that there are some pilots going on. So it might just be something to think about as we go forward as a, as a fun way to invest our students in science and learning and kind of their, their own environment, so.
I think we, I will say, just. I, we actually at CU, we developed some modules for age-appropriate science teaching. And this is actually in response to your teachers asking us to do that. So we, we have some of this curriculum already done and pilot-tested and you're welcome to those materials. The graduate students that developed those moved on, but at the time they were popular, that was pre-COVID and then, you know, that shot all that attention to it. But we, we do have some of those materials, you know, for K through five and middle, nothing for high school. If, if you're interested in, and we wrote a proposal, educational proposal around that very idea. But again, COVID kind of put the kibosh on that. But I, I'd be happy to partner with you as my graduate students. It was just such a positive win-win from your teachers, from the kids, from the field techs performing the work to do something like that. So if you want to, let's do it.
Yeah, I agree with that, but we have to be careful.
Hey, Richard, we've got to, we've got to wrap up here real quick. We're way over time, I apologize.
I'm sorry. I was just, we don't want kids going in there kind of a shotgun approach with monitors that they're bringing from home.
No, 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 this is science teaching stuff, not, not parents. Monitor and ring.
Don't want that.
Hey, Richard and Mark, will you mute, please?
All right, thanks. That, we'll, we'll follow up on that with Rob. And then we'll follow up with you, Rob, on getting the interim report. And if we have any other questions, we'll maybe schedule it for another meeting down the road. So they usually know, we've now given Bill, which probably doesn't break his heart, any eight minutes to do his whole presentation. So any other questions, board members? Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
We're, we're okay to go, Rich? All done?
A little bit of a reminder that some of the timing on the information is here. In the past, we've done this a week and even two weeks earlier than we are tonight. The data on the budget is from the June adoption. So there's some information that is from the June budget that will be updated this evening when that budget, the revised budget passes. So there's a few things that are, which is why we call this the draft version as well. So I will quickly walk through some items to note. So at the very beginning, so anybody, if anybody's watching online, the book is attached to the agenda item. There is not a presentation, I'm just walking through the pages of the booklet. So we start out with a strategic plan overview for the district. We get into a couple of pages of school finance in Colorado to help build an understanding in the community of how school finance works at a high level and also the constitutional constraints that exist. Page six has a running tally of the budget stabilization factor, the mechanism used to reduce the state's obligation to fund K-12 education. This is specific to Boulder Valley. So if you look at the bottom number on there, three hundred and forty-one million almost is the deficit that Boulder Valley has been underfunded in the more than a decade that it's been around. Page nine, we have a table of our peer districts. So the peer districts that we have used historically have been the top ten largest districts plus Littleton. So eleven districts in total. And they're comparable, both in size, mostly centered around the front range and then also Littleton from a. Littleton from a, having a relatively high override funding and also some performance comparisons. The, page ten, we have a chart referencing the revenue streams for the General Operating Fund and what is more and less controllable. So these are the funding streams that we have coming into the district, things that are like policy decisions at the local level, so we have a lot of control over that, all the way down to how many cars are registered in the district around specific ownership tax. So again, where we have some control over revenues in the district and where we don't have that control. We have a couple of pages of data points and information and some of the mill levy overrides that we have locally. On page fifteen, we have a pretty thorough description of our differentiated funding for schools that was implemented starting in this current year and will continue for two more fiscal years beyond that. Then we have a couple of pages of BVSD's spending patterns, both audited expenditures as well as the budget for the current year. Then on page eighteen, we have some, we start our district comparisons. So again, this is Boulder Valley in blue and the average of the peer districts in the green. And so this does show an indication of where we're investing as a percent of the total budget, higher in some areas than our peer district average, particularly in teachers. And then also where we're investing lower, which is in textbooks and materials. It is interesting that in the 2019-20 fiscal year, so the first year of the pandemic, that some of these numbers shifted, I would say as a percentage, fairly dramatically as they're pretty consistent in prior years. But it's consistent across both the peer and the Boulder Valley averages. Next page on nineteen, we have a chart that shows some of the enrollment declines that are happening across that same number of districts. So that five-year net change in membership, twenty-seven point, twenty-seven and a half thousand student decline. On page twenty, we have a new chart, so we tried to add a little bit of new information. So this is a job category, category turnover rate. And again, showing Boulder Valley in blue and the peer average in green. And I would suggest that a low turnover in staff is also, while it can increase overall expenditures on salaries, it also reduces costs, training costs, has consistency of instruction. And research shows that high teacher turnover rates in schools negatively impact student achievement for all students in a school. And BVSD's turnover is below our peer district average in all job categories that are defined by the state. We have a chart on the student, what we call our special programs report, so that's just the student characteristics within the district. A couple of pages on student outcomes. We have a few pages, three pages of a write-up on the 2014 bond program. Then we have a little chart of the budget development timeline and milestones that we reviewed back in December. On page twenty-eight, summary, very high-level summary of the governor's budget that was released on November first, as is the requirement for the governor to do that. Then we have about, I think, five pages of the economic outlook. So this is from the Leeds Business Research Division at CU Boulder. They've put it out for fifty-seven years. And so this is some excerpts from that report to give a indication of where both the overall Colorado economy is headed as well as the local Boulder County. Then on page thirty-three, we begin with our, what we call our assumptions and estimates to begin the budget development. So these are things like the projected inflation rate, some compensation expectations, enrollment projections, governor's budget impacts, price escalations, and strategic initiatives. And then a few links for some additional resources if anybody is interested. How'd I do?
I'm guessing that there's questions and I'm wondering, Rob, what we can do because I don't want to start the board meeting late because we have public participation and all that. Is there a way we can bring this back or what, what do you suggest?
I'd suggest that board members can go ahead and email me and Bill with any questions that, that they might have. And if there's enough questions that would dictate that we have another short session, we could do that. The budget process is ongoing, right? And so this is going to be, there's going to be opportunities to engage in a lot of the questions as we kind of go through the process. But there's specific questions related to the strategic financial plan, email us and then let us get, maybe we can put together a Q and A for board members on any specific questions.
I still think it might make sense to bring it back because I think for the five people who might be listening, sometimes the questions are really helpful from the board that they might be having, so maybe we should, we could think about that too.
Oh, happy to. Yes, you know, whatever the, the board thinks would be the most helpful. We can take a look at maybe potentially working this into the next time Bill presents on budget to do a quick just overview of questions.
So this is a draft, so when would we see another draft or what's the plan? And then Kitty has a question.
It's the revised budget is what we update, so, you know, end of February, first of March typically. So maybe the board meeting in March.
So maybe for timing, we should make sure we get questions, if we have questions about the draft before you finalize it to Rob. And then we could see if we can bring it back. Does that, does that make sense?
Sure. Yep, I think, and I think there's the opportunity to piggyback on, Bill, do you, well, we're going to talk about a prioritization, board members, next week, right? And which at that point, we can kind of show you where we've plugged in, where we want to talk about budget. And then if that timeline doesn't work, we can work to potentially...
I don't think it's a ton of time, I just don't want to start super late, so. Kitty, did you have a question?
Yes, the question I have is the assumptions, the first one being inflation, which we know is wrong, right? So how does that impact?
So this is the, that particular inflation rate was what the, the JBC staff projected in December, three point seven percent. It is the average annual inflation, it's not the, it's a, it's a different way of calculating it. I think I referenced it in, in my presentation.
So the inflation they talk about on the news being seven percent or something, how is that different from this? Quickly.
Average annual versus year-over-year. Average annual is January to Janu, or basically end of December to end of December versus the year-over-year, which is the higher number.
Okay, so it's not as bad as I think it is?
It's, it's the calculation that is in Tabor of what inflation is as used in increasing state budgets.
Okay, thank you.
So it's part of the problem, and I'll be quick. The Tabor tells us how we have to measure inflation and we have to pay for things that are much more expensive than what's being measured by the Tabor inflationary rate. So there, people are now paying attention to inflation, we didn't use to as much. And so there are those kinds of questions and we can bring those back later. But that's part of the problem, Kitty, is that Tabor tells us how to define it and we have to pay for increased healthcare and increased employment and all those things which often, almost always exceed what the Tabor inflationary rate is. Is that fair, Bill?
Yeah.
Thank you for being expeditious.